Hello, everybody. This is David Malling, one of the commissioners from the Public Works Department. And today is a special session for November eighteenth at six thirty P. M. And I'm going to read off the commission statement. The South Pasadena Public Works Commission Statement for Cibility. As your elected governing board, we will treat each other, members of the public, the city employees with patience, civility, courtesy as a model of the same behavior as we wish to reflect on South Pasadena for the conduct of all business and community participation. The decision made tonight will be for the benefit of the South Pasadena community and not for personal gain. Public notice of participation accessibility pursuant to section three of the executive order in oh eight twenty-one issued by Governor Newsom. The regular meeting for the Public Works Commission, November eighteenth twenty-one, will be conducted remotely and held by video conference. The special meeting will be conducted remotely only and will not be physically present in the council meeting. Chambers to maximize public safety while still maintaining transparency and public access, members of the public can observe the meeting via Zoom in one of the three methods below, and there's a bunch of different links if you'd want to join in. And for additional assistance, there's more links. Important notice, members of the public may access the meeting to observe the meeting proceedings. However, at this time, there's no live, real-time participation by members of the public. Public Works Commission welcomes public input. Public comments will be taken live in one of two formats, in person or via Zoom. Members of the public may also submit their comments and writing to the Public Works Commission. Consideration by email comments. There's an email link. Public comments must be received by twelve P. M. November eighteenth to ensure adequate time to compile and post. Written public comments will not be read out loud during the meeting. Call to order. Raina, I'll let you do the roll call. And you are on mute.
Okay, quick roll call. Vice Chair David Malling.
Here.
Commissioner Sam Hernandez.
Present.
Commissioner Frank Catania.
Here.
Acting Deputy Director Ted Gerber.
Here, present.
And I am Reyna Salazar Martin, Public Works Management Assistant. At this moment, just wanted to know Chair Julie Riley is excused for this meeting tonight. Also not present is City Council Liaison Evelyn Snyder. And at this moment, we do not have an attendance. Commissioner Charles Trevino, I will be keeping an eye on the attendance that comes in through the meeting. And if he does come, I'll go ahead and promote him to panelist so that you see him right away.
Great. And now we'll go with the pledge allegiance. So stand, be in front of the camera, whatever you feel comfortable with. I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisal. And justice for all. Very fast, quick on the draw here. Ted, before we get into the public comment, Raina and Ted, I think we had a discussion that we want to provide just a high-level discussion for this, the residents of City of South Pasadena, that the Public Works Department is, you know, title important source for the City of South Pasadena. And one thing that we want the residents to be aware of is there are, you know, four major, you know, things that the City of South Pasadena oversees. And one thing is being electrical, and that's handled by Southern California Edison, who we third-party it out to. And at the present time, from Ted's point of view, there's no outstanding issues. Any outstanding issues that she as a resident does have, please contact them directly. We have two other third-party vendors, one being Trash being with Athens Services. Again, no issues from the city's point. But Ted will elaborate further on that. But again, with regards to your own personal issues or any concerns, please reach out to Athens Services directly. And finally, South Pasadena, I mean, Southern California gas for our gas, they're another vendor, please do the same thing. Water, that is what is being handled by South Pasadena directly. And the commissioners, as well as myself, had the opportunity to tour all the facilities last month, which from a high level, and I can leave it up to Sam and Frank to talk at a later time. But we were very all, very impressed with the services that the City of South Pasadena offers. And when it comes to water, there is a report, if you want to know what quality of the water that you're drinking, the City of South Pasadena has provided an in-depth analysis for you, which I believe is important. And they've taken the time to explain where the water comes from, where the commissioners were, you know, given a great tour of the facility. So I encourage you to go onto the website to download this report, or you could pick it up at the city office. But it is really in-depth. And after reading the report myself, I can assure you the water is of high-quality standard. And with that said, Ted, I was just going to hand it off to you before we go into public comments. If there's anything else you'd like to talk.
Sure, I'll just add two things to that, just recent updates with regard to Edison Utility. Throughout the city, there are cities-owned streetlights, and there are also Edison-owned streetlights. With regard to the Edison lights, we have been working on them with a project to upgrade some of the bulbs to LED fixtures. So you may notice some different streetlights in your area, and that project is being funded and conducted by Edison. With regard to trash in Athens, we do have some changes coming up next year. There's a mandated, there's a state law that mandates that every city separate their organic waste from their, their other refuse so that that waste can go to a composting facility versus a landfill. So for the most part, South Pasadena does this already, where we separate our yard waste, our green waste, and that can be diverted to a compost facility, and then our trash and recyclables are routed to a material recycling facility, a MRF. So the only difference.
Just a question, that's both residential and commercial?
Yes, that's both residential and commercial. So starting starting January first, twenty twenty-two, the only change that you have to know about is that your food scraps, you know, chicken, shellfish, fruits, rice grains, things like that, will now go into the same receptacle that you put your yard waste into. And so now that will be diverted to a composting facility versus a landfill. Now, the city eventually will probably restructure some trash services and provide colorized bins to residents and, sorry, barrels to residents and bins to commercial facilities and like multifamily apartments and stuff like that. The details of that are being worked out, and certainly you'll be informed about that over time. But as far as the change for January first, it's just a behavioral change of putting your food scraps into with your yard waste. And we're in the process of changing the South Pasadena Municipal Code to reflect that. We went to council on November third initially. We were there again last night, and we'll finalize the process on December first.
And because Athens, as in most of our contracts with third vendors are out to bid, most of your facilities, such as Athens Waste Management, I'm not sure who else is out there large enough that can keep the separation between your waste and your organics and is that naturally the only two that I'm aware of? Are there others that are doing this? I think the contract is due up next year as well.
So every, every state, every juris, every city and every county and every jurisdiction in the state is required to do this. So we're not alone. We've been talking to our neighbors. In fact, part of the law, separate from the trash services, requires us to initiate a food recovery program where grocery stores like Trader Joe's and Bristol Farms, Pavilions, Vons, Ralph's in the city have to recover their edible food and get that over to a donation center. So it doesn't go to a landfill. That's another part of the regulation, and we're working with the San Gabriel Valley Cog to actually implement that. So yeah, everybody's doing this, every city, regionally, we've got partners. As far as the different types of services, waste management, you know, Rainbow, CRNR, and Athens, they're all doing it too. And so Athens is, is working with all their, their contract cities, including us, to get this done. And that's actually an advantage for us because we get to share the costs across the, you know, whatever changes Athens makes gets shared. And so I'll go ahead.
I was just gonna say that I don't know that anyone else on the board here has ever visited their facility out in Silmar, Athens facility where they do the separation of all the waste. If they haven't, I don't know if it's any part of our scope of, of our commission. But I know that Ed Chin, who's one of our chamber members, is always ready to put a group together and take a tour out there in case we're at all interested. I've gone out there twice, and I think it's absolutely wonderful. It's a great site, it's a great visit, world of information, and it just, I can only speak highly of Athens. Anyhow, enough.
Yeah, certainly, if you're interested, we could reach out, and several council members and commissioners have gone on that tour. I haven't gotten to do it myself, but I've got a pretty good understanding of how interesting it is. So yeah, we can make those arrangements if you're interested.
Well, great. Good. Looks like we have a road trip with you, Ted and Frank. All right. So let's go to public comment if that's, if we're all good. Raina, I think there's a, you have a public comment that you'd like to bring up?
Yes, so these were, I did stand in advance the two public comments that we received prior to this meeting that were rolled over from the last regular meeting. One was asked to be read aloud, so that's the one I'll be reading. And after that, we did not have any further comments. So first public comment, I am Judy Shore and live at five-five-six Alta Vista Avenue. Please read this comment at the eleven-ten-twenty-one meeting. As I am unable to attend, this comment is directed at the five-year capital improvement, improvement project. Our street is in terrible repair, and people who have lived here for over thirty-five years do not remember it ever being repaved during this period. There are bumps, lumps, holes, crumbling pavements, and curbs, and multiple hazards throughout the street. This is not just a cosmetic issue. What makes the situation particularly dangerous is the fact that there's, there are no sidewalks. Consequently, pedestrians are forced to walk on the street with an abundance of tripping hazards. If a sidewalk, if a sidewalk was in such poor repair, there is no doubt in mind that the city would repair it. Keep in mind that the street is our sidewalk in this part of the Monterey Hills. I have contacted Public Works on multiple occasions and been told that our street is not even on the five-year list for street repairs. Instead, Public Works occasionally sends a crew to repair a hole in the street, which is like putting a small bandage on a bleeding wound. I invite the commission members to walk the street as I do every day and look at all the hazards. You will not be proud of what you see.
Thank you, Raina, for sharing that. Ted, is that something you could look into and get back to the, the commissioners on particularly her concern on her street, but maybe also address, is this a public works department topic? Does this get handoff to transportation? Who's responsible? And then ultimately, how can we appease this person who obviously has a concern? So that would be wonderful. You could look into it for us.
Certainly, yes. And we are looking into this already. The comment, I think, was initiated from our five-year CIP plan, which we introduced the concept of that at a special meeting, just, I want to say it was last week. The plan is to have another special meeting, council meeting on January twelfth. And we plan to have more information about the condition of streets and what our five-year plan for street repair is at that meeting. Side, we, the council also asked us to take a look at sidewalks and to have another discussion about sidewalk condition. And there was a comment at that meeting also by the council members about discussing the the development of sidewalks in the Monterey Hills area. So that will be part of our CIP discussion in January.
Well, great. Good. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it if you can look into that. That'd be wonderful. Presentations, Public Works Department Work Order System Update. Go to you, Ted?
Yes, so this will be oral, oral presentation. So I think the last we might have talked about this in one of our previous meetings is, well, firstly, describe what we're talking about here, the Public Works Department Work Order System Update. At present, the Public Works Department has a, a ticket-based work order system where, when an issue comes up, say at a facility, an item is entered into our web interface computer system and assigned to one of the staff members to work on. What the department is envisioning as a, as a improvement to the system is actually a GIS-based work order system where all of the public works assets like hydrants and pipelines and you know, streetlights and things like that have, have a, are represented on a GIS map, almost like Google Earth or Google Maps. And we're able to associate work order ticket items to those and then prioritize work and develop metrics on how, on how we're performing. So the, the initially, the plan prior to this, earlier this year, was to implement a software system almost through like a sole source process. But what we've learned is that there are many systems like this. It's more appropriate for an RFP process for it, for us to seek out a software. We've also learned that the initial commitment from City Council of fifty thousand dollars to implement the system likely isn't enough for the types of systems that we're looking at. We think this is probably going to be more like a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're going to try to expand that budget for this program in the mid-year budget in January or February. And then we're going to issue an RFP to try to implement that software system. So the advantage of the RFP process is that we can get a very good product at a competitive price. And we can also develop a specification that works for the city-specific situation. Basically, right now, we're looking at a bunch of different software types and trying to meld in what works best for the city so we can publish this RFP and then implement the system next year. So, so that's our update. We haven't gotten very far in the implementation process. We're still in the early stages of procurement, but that's what we're looking at for the rest of twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year and then into twenty-two, twenty-three.
Is that within our budget already?
The, the fifty thousand dollars has already been budgeted. We're going to request that an additional seventy thousand, most likely will be budgeted. And this, the initial phase of this program will be paid out of the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Fund. So it's paid by enterprise funds that come from our water rates. And that's what the assets will focus on first, and then we'll expand that out into other types of equipment that the Public Works Department handles.
Great. Thank you, Ted. Discussion items, I see we have three items to discuss.
Yes, so I'll, I'll start with the first. So Measure W twenty twenty twenty-seven fiscal year safe clean water project, the Royal Seco TRP status update. So what this is talking about is every year of the Measure W program, which is basically a, a property tax assessment for pervious services, perv, pervious surfaces in L.A. County. And South Pasadena residents and businesses pay into this on their property taxes. And the funding is fed back to the city as a local return, which we use to fund our stormwater programs and water staff. And then also, there's a regional component to this, to this funding. And so every year, South Pasadena applies for regional funding to fund some of its larger projects. And so on this past year, South Pasadena was awarded funding to develop projects along the Royal Seco that, that the commissioners are familiar with. This is separate than discussion item number five, which is a stormwater project between Pasadena and South Pasadena, which we'll get into. But this is, these are projects for projects specifically along the Royal Seco at, at located, well, I could, maybe I should share a map, and that would be helpful to just point at the map and show you what we're talking about here. That's all right with it. Raina, do you mind enabling the sharing?
And you did say this was Prop W?
Yes, this is Measure W, LA County Measure, to fund stormwater projects. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So you can see here, we're looking at the north side of South Pasadena here. You can see the, the border here outlined. And what these shaded areas are, are storm watersheds, subwatersheds within South Pasadena. Basically, stormwater runoff dri, drains from these colored areas into the Royal Seco. So we've got four areas that we're looking here, four watersheds. And so those correspond to four projects. And what South Pasadena was awarded was funding to do a, what would they call a technical resource program? It's basically a feasibility study as to what type of infrastructure projects can we build at these locations to make use of the stormwater that would otherwise drain into the Oriole Seco and then would drain down into the LA River and then into the ocean. And so what this feasibility study is about is taking a look at each one of these locations and identifying what's the best project that we can implement here most cost-effectively and most for the public benefit. And so the way that Measure W does this is it, it gives you weights towards like a scoring system. And if we score high enough with our conceptual design, then we would apply the following year for infrastructure funds and actually get money to construct these facilities for Measure W. And that's what, what, that's what happened under item number five. We actually were awarded funds for another project in the north, which I'll get to. Um, so our, our work right now is basically evaluating what our options are for these four facilities. And we've had our contractor Stan Tech, who essentially works for L.A. County since the money is, is routed through them and works with our staff to develop these. So we, we have a conceptual idea of what we want to do at all four of these locations. And the next step is to actually receive public input. So for the next month or so, we have a long list of different organizations, including this commission to visit and speak with and get some feedback about the projects. But the thing I want to highlight tonight is the alternatives that are being considered and why we're going in the direction that we consider that we're going. So the overall design is that water, stormwater is coming down the Oriole Seco and also coming from these areas into the city. And so we want to do is, is treat this water and perhaps reuse it. So the northern project, number one, what we're, we're considering right now is actually a a a wetland. And this would be on, you can see here, it's sort of in this, in this little area here between the road that goes by our Royal Park by the fields and the Royal Seco. And the reason this is being considered a wet, a wetland is, number one, the scoring mechanism for Measure W emphasizes nature-based solutions that are essentially these recreational parks that people can utilize. That has a very high score and will likely receive funding. So for example, one of the things we considered was implementing a recreational field here, like a soccer field or something like that. And there's technical reasons we couldn't go that direction, and I'll cover that in a moment. But as far as a feasibility perspective, we most likely would not get the Measure W funding to to implement this project with that type of recreational use at this facility. It's best if we have a nature-based wetland treatment solution that can serve as, as basically a public space for people to, you know, use and, and for, for wildlife and stuff like that. Now, the technical reason behind that is if we were to implement a soccer field or something like that there, that would be like a below-ground infrastructure. If we were to do some sort of stormwater capture system, it'd be below ground. And it's important hydraulically that this facility is like at grade level or slightly above as a wetland would be. Because this is upstream of all these other projects, and we want water to gravity flow down to these other projects. Number one is that's a much easier long-term maintenance for the city. If we were to implement some sort of pumping system that would require both maintenance and energy and, and the operations costs for this project would go up, which would be on, the city would be on the hook for. Number two is the nature-based solution, since we are dealing with the Royal Seco. Technically, there is, you know, fish wildlife that could be affected by this implementation. And we want a natural passageway for them through that system versus like through like a, you know, a pumping and pipe system, which isn't really that great for, for fish to move through. So, so that's why we're looking at that as, as an option number one. But we, for option number, for, sorry, for facility number one. For facility number two, I was mentioning how these all are downstream of this. Facility number two would receive water, which would drain south to facility number two, and also the area from the green here. And this is actually located below the two soccer fields and the baseball diamonds at, at a Royal Park. And this would be an underground basin. So basically, the soccer fields would be pulled up, and we would install an infiltration infrastructure under, underneath, underground, which basically consists of these like perforated pipes that water would enter and then percolate into the ground and refill the, refill the basin underneath the city. And then the soccer fields and the baseball fields would basically be rebuilt over that with some improvements. And this is a good solution because it returns water back into, back into the groundwater, stormwater, that would otherwise be discharged into the ocean. And we still get to preserve, you know, the sports recreation facilities there at the park. The number three location is within the golf course. And so obviously, we want that golf course to remain. So the obvious solution for the facility number three to cover this storm watershed is simply a wetland-like water feature at the golf course. This would actually be between holes thirteen and fourteen, and it would appear no differently than just a natural water feature on any other golf course, but would essentially be supplied by stormwater. And not only that, we could utilize the water once it's been disinfected separately as irrigation water at the golf course. So we would continue not having to rely on potable water sources to irrigate the golf course. So the number four facility is interesting because we have several options, and this is the one we should, we should talk about a little bit closer. So the number four facility, there was three items considered. Number one was a, another wetland on the driving, this is in the driving range area, a wetland in the driving range. The second option for number four was a wetland in the nature park area. And the third option was actually another infiltration basin underground, similar to the one in number two, that's under the soccer fields. Now, our consultant weighed the pros and cons of each of these. And some of the major factors were how much water can facility four take on? Because since it's the last facility in the row, any water that's not utilized in the infiltration basin or not utilized at the golf course for irrigation would flow down to number four. And any water that we can't use in number four would basically flow back into the Royal Seco. And any water that we can't use in number four would basically flow back into the Royal Seaco. And our, um, intent here is to try to utilize as much stormwater as possible. So that's one consideration, considering the, the three options here at, at number four. Another would be what type of construction disruption would we have? You know, disrupting the driving range versus disrupting the nature park. And then of course, um, the other option is how much it's going to cost. So, um, the nature park option isn't, isn't a great option because basically it would have to remove part of the nature park to install a wetland. So it would disrupt the nature park. Uh, there would be a, a heavier environmental, uh, negative, well, not negative, but a concern because of the disruption of the nature, nature park. And it would reduce usage of that park because the wetlands being placed there. Um, the wetland at the driving range, uh, i- is a good option, but from a practical standpoint, it didn't really make a whole lot of sense. A wetland on a golf course is nice, but a wetland on a driving range might have that much, not that much at, uh, use because people will be hitting golf balls into the water there and they won't be able to retrieve them. Um, and it will just, it might increase the up, uh, the maintenance for that, uh, driving range. Um, the other option, the infiltration basin of the dri- at the driving range was actually the much better option because, um, whereas the wetland at the nature park and the, uh, driving range wouldn't utilize all the water that's designed to flow to facility number four. And it would dump some of that water back into the Royal Seaco. Whereas an infiltration basin can be appropriately sized to capture, uh, what our design standard is in stormwater, which is the eighty-fifth percentile. Basically, um, the storm that happens, uh, that's eighty-five percent of, uh, of, 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 uh, of storms that occur, like the, like a very likely storm, a large likely storm. So, so we're actually recommending, um, the infiltration basin option here for number four versus the other two options. Now, there were some concerns about, um, nature park not being considered an option because, uh, there might be an irrigation demand at nature park. And so we could certainly look into, uh, how some of that water may be utilized for irrigation at nature park, but we're not advising that a wetland be implemented at the park and would disturb the park and actually reduce the, the, uh, the land space that they could, could be used there. So, um, all of these decisions are somewhat preliminary. Like I said, the next step is for us to, uh, seek public comment with many stakeholders in the area. Uh, we have a whole list of those stakeholders. And so, uh, that's where we are with this project right now. The plan would be to wrap this up, uh, sometime in the, this, at the end of this fiscal year so that we could try to go and get measure W infrastructure funding, which would mean the, the money to build this whole thing. Um, next year, we would start that process.
Great. Well, thank you. Um.
Are we, are we looking at doing all four or is it primarily doing the first one to see what, what there may be left to continue on with the others? If we, if we're limiting, I, I guess that, that the question I have is you have so much water going in to the first one, are you, is, it's being utilized in two, three and four? I- am I, am I mistaken? Or is just the, is the amount of water that's coming in and I'm looking at colors? If I'm looking at the green, is all of that water is, is not going into area one, it's just going into area two? So that we know how much is going into each one of those areas? So whatever the design is, is designed for each one of those and really doesn't take into account the others?
Yeah, these are great questions. So I'll, I'll start off by saying that, um, whether we do all four and how much we do of all four will be decided by, mainly by, you know, how successful we are with the grant.
Okay.
That's the first thing I'll say. Now, the exception to that is actually we're going to implement number one first for a separate reason and it's number five on our agenda. Because number one is largely part of another project, um,
That's right.
that we're doing with Pasadena to the north.
Right, right.
Um, and what, one of the things we have to do with that is actually to figure out how much of number one we part of the north project with Pasadena and how much of number one we part of this, this grouping of four. So that's the other part of it. Now to answer your other question about where the water is coming from, it's actually both. So water is coming from the Royal Seaco to number one. Number one passes water to number two, the one pipeline. And number one passes water, number three to another pipeline. And then three passes to four. But in addition to them passing water to each other, each of them receives water from these colored areas. So it's both from the Royal Seaco upstream and it's also from all the storm drains in the city. So, uh, number one would have a pipe coming in from a Royal Seaco, like a diversion and also a pipe coming in from the blue area. Number two would have a pipe, one pipe coming from number one and then a pipe coming in from green and so on. Three would have from above and then from the side and four would have from above and from the side. And, uh, to your comment, um, what our, uh, what our consultant has done is basically looked at this area, looked at how much is pervious versus impervious, meaning like water that goes into someone's grassy backyard is not going to make it over here. But water that falls on the street or a driveway or someone's rooftop will make it over here. So they've calculated this standard storm design to figure out how many acre feet each of these, you know, how many gallons each of these is actually going to receive. And that's how they're sizing these different projects. So this wetland will be sized based on that. The infiltration will be sized based on that. And that's actually how they figured out number four. Uh, some of the scenarios we talked about would actually have an overflow water because the design was too small to accommodate it. Whereas our, our likely selected choice would be large enough to handle both any excess water from number three and also the water from the blue area. So those are great questions and.
And they, they take into account El Nino and La Niña and they take in all of those accounts, even though we're sitting in a, in a drought season. And we know that eventually we'll get rain, I know.
Yeah, it, it's tough. So what they do is they look at the long-term, over many years, uh, data on this and pick a sizable storm. So things are probably, if you were to guess, if you were to like thumbnail it, things are probably a bit oversized, but that's a good thing to capture the water. But in the case of these large, you know, uh, you know, fifty-year storms or a hundred-year storms, which, you know, even does a little misleading because they'd be, they seem to happen more and more with climate change. Um, there are overflow, um, measures implemented that, you know, these wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have local flooding. Basically the overflow water would dump into the Royal Seaco and it would, it would go on for safety concerns. So you don't have a flooded condition.
Right.
I have a question Ted, this Charles Trevino.
Uh, how are you doing?
Good, thank you. I'm doing good. Uh, what's the projected acre feet of water that we're looking at? At the maximum flow?
Um, I do have those numbers that are part of this. Uh, this is our feasibility study. You can see here, it's this nine-hundred-page study that we've gone through. Uh, let me pull those numbers up for you. Uh, oh, here they are. I just had them. We have like a flow chart in here that I want to pull up. And let me try to find this real quick. Give me one moment.
This is time for the advertisement. If anyone is interested, we do have Tournament of Rose tickets to help fund the float every year. If you're interested, we do have a few left. We only printed out eighteen hundreds or, yeah, eighteen hundred. So your chances are really good. First place has four tickets to the, uh, Rose Bowl game. Second place is four tickets to the grandstand seating. And third place is three hundred dollars and they're only a hundred dollars each. Thank you for your time and patience. Come ahead, take it away Ted.
Thanks Sam, but it was helpful. I was just trying to find this. Um, so, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hernandez, yes. Um, so I, I don't know if you can see my screen here, the flow chart. Is this, is this presented here?
Yeah, we can see.
Okay, great. So, um, you can see here, uh, the Royal, uh, Seaco here, here's the diversion. And then as I was saying, here's facility one, which feeds number two over here. They're a little bit out of order and then also feeds number three separately. Um, so you could see our, our sizing here. Uh, eight-point-three acre feet for, um, this wetland. Six-point-nine for, uh, the infiltration basin. Uh, nine-point-oh-seven for the rather, you know, the larger, uh, golf course wetland. And then this number actually isn't that accurate, four-point-two-five right now, because this was considering the wetland, a wetland at the driving range. Um, now we're considering an infiltration basin. And I want to say, I think it was around six or seven acre feet infiltration basin. Um, so these are the type of volumes we're talking about, uh, uh, that these, the capacity for these facilities.
So we're looking at, at maximum capacity, twenty-five acre feet, but roughly twenty-five, twenty-six acre feet?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Okay, alright, alright. And this is given that we would ourselves in a, in a large, um, fifty-year rainfall or something like that, right?
Right, this would be like, now, this is modeled after the eighty-fifth percentile storm. So, uh, you know, a much larger storm than that, we wouldn't, since these are max capacities, we would overflow basically into the, back into the Royal Seaco.
Okay. It's a good plan, Ted.
Yeah, we're very excited about it. Um, you know, we're, we're interested in, in, uh, public input. You know, we have, there's a long way to go in terms of speaking to all the stakeholders. Um, and then, you know, we have lots of discussions to happen with parks. This is a really popular series of facilities and so, um, we want to make this work for everybody.
Yeah, the wetland ideas is good regarding, you know, just, uh, birds and, and fish and, you know, wildlife. I think that's good.
Yeah, we're hoping for a high score with the measure W with the steering, um, committee. Yeah. So, um, if there's no other questions, we could, we could, uh, move on to the next item or I could.
Let's go to the next item.
Okay, alright. Um, so the next item on our agenda is the twenty-twenty-one annual report and accomplishments and the twenty-twenty-two work plan update. This will be a very fast one because, um, in speaking with the executive team and the city manager um, and the other commissions, we're actually going to start this process in January. So some commissions have started putting together their, um, annual report ideas and their work plans for next year. Some have not considered it at all. We, as Public Works Commission, have a good idea of what we're getting ourselves into, some of the things we just talked about here. Um, but we are going to do that process a little more formally, um, uh, cohesively with the other commissions in, uh, starting in January. So we'll give you more updates on that.
Great.
Alright. So, um, the last item on the discussion items, actually I'll reshare this map here. Is our Prop sixty-eight stormwater project between South, uh, between Pasadena and South Pasadena. Um, and so just for convenience, I'm gonna reshare the same map we're looking at. Uh, can you see my screen right now?
Yep.
So, um, prior to considering these four projects, um, Pasadena and South Pasadena, uh, sought both Prop sixty-eight funds and measure W funds for a project just like the ones I talked about. But the project locations for this were actually one right about here in Pasadena, uh, called the San Rafael Project. And then this one right here, um, which we're calling the San Pasquale Project. So the idea was, um, number one, the, the same concept I already explained applies. Basically, the San Rafael Project, pulls water from the San Rafael, um, channel and, um, treats it and then sends it back down the Royal Seaco, so it's clean. And then this San Pasquale, like we already talked about, pulls water which would already be treated um, out of the Royal Seaco for use in these, for, for this wetland usage. So, um, one of the steps we have to take with this Prop sixty-eight stormwater project is understanding the scope between these two things because, um, we actually already have funding for these projects, which I'll talk about. And so seeing what we can accomplish, uh, between us and Pasadena on these two projects and then whatever, um, is left over to be accomplished, uh, to seek that through our measure W project we just talked about. So let me, um, let me share one other picture here for you so you can get a better idea what we're talking about here. Can you see my screen here?
Yes, yes.
Um, so this is just kind of zooming in. You can see here, um, the San Rafael Project here in Pasadena and then the San Pasquale Project here. And so we've already been, um, awarded this, this year, this was a previous application. We've been awarded four point eight, four-point-eight million dollars in the measure W funding between us and Pasadena and, uh, three-point-four, three-point-five million dollars in Prop sixty-eight funding for this project. So those, those funds cover these projects. Um, and this, the measure W was just recently awarded. And so the next step for us is actually to working with Pasadena and understanding the scope and, uh, and start the project, uh, specification documents, uh, to start these, these projects off. So, um, so we haven't had that meeting yet. We've been sort of back and forth with Pasadena until the money was finalized. Basically that measure W funding had to be, you know, go through the WASC, the Steering Committee and then go over through the Regional Oversight Committee and then go through the LA Board, um, uh, County Board of Supervisors. But we are, uh, going to start that conversation about, uh, outlining the scope for these projects. And so, um, that will mitigate the funding that we'll need for the southern projects, uh, hopefully. And so there's not much other to update on that. Um, we've been talking about this one for a little while, but we're excited to get started on this, these projects.
Great. Well, if there's no questions from the commissioners, uh, Arena, I think you want to bring up, uh, um, the vote for the, uh, meeting from July fourteenth?
Yes, so, um, we, we can make a motion to, to approve the minutes of July fourteenth. Uh, does anybody want to make that motion?
Sure, I will. I can, Trevino.
Thank you. Um, so we're just going to do a quick roll call. Uh, so, Commissioner Katania?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I need to abstain.
Sure, no problem. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Malling?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevino?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, with a voice vote of three yeses, uh, one abstaining, uh, the motion passes to pass the minutes for July fourteenth. Because you are here, um, conducting the meeting or hosting the meeting, uh, by Chair Malling. I'll be sending the minutes to you if that's okay for signature?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Not a problem. Uh, City Council Liaison Communications. Our, uh, our City Council Representative is not here today. So we will move forward. Um, Commissioner Communications, Sam, Charles, Frank, anything you would like to comment, uh, or say?
I don't have anything, Mr. Malling, just.
I think we've covered just about everything. The only thing, Ted, we were, at, at first, we were questioning as to whether or not, um, and I think you'll check into it to find out as to whether or not we are, it should be part of, uh, the roadwork that needs to be looked at as public works or if it's something that, um, the other half of our public work commission should be. And we have no problem in taking, I mean, we can sure contribute, uh, because I, I do live up here in the Monterey Hills. And so we, yes, we are looking at, at getting some repairs. Uh, do, but, and just a question more than anything, is there not a timeline set on repairs for almost all of our streets?
Uh, there is. I, I have to get into those details, uh, you know, as becoming the acting, uh, Director, I'm new to the transportation side of the city. I mean, and that's a good question, in fact, about. I mean, and that's a good question, in fact, about the responsibilities, because I just had my first Transportation Commission meeting, uh, yeah, two days ago. Um, so I'll find out about that. There is a schedule. I know it was offset a bit by COVID. And uh, we do have a relatively new condition assessment of all the streets from last year. So the priorities may have shifted. So I will definitely get back to you on those two items.
Okay. And then I think the um, if I'm not mistaken, um, and just more of a question, our next meeting is set for January? Rena? It is, okay. Alright, I I have nothing else. Thank you. Thanks again.
Sure, sure. Um, Frank, anything on your side?
Okay, nothing for me this evening.
Great. Uh, Staff Liaison Communications, Rena, Ted, anything you guys want to share?
I think we covered everything. We'll we'll get back to those couple items and uh, yeah, we'll we'll um, we'll have some more CIP information for you in our in our next meeting.
Well, then that concludes this meeting. We are adjourned and everybody have a happy holidays and uh we'll talk to everyone in January. Thank you very much, Rena, for putting this on and Ted, uh uh congratulations on uh being our uh acting uh director. Alrighty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Night. Take care.
Bye-bye.